New York's infamous Blue Note era comes to Mars Hill, January 24th, for a special, one-night-only concert at Mars Landing Galleries. Civil disobedience is a project bowing to the politically-conscious underground jazz of 1960s New York City. You'll hear music from progressive composers such as Bobby Hutcherson, Jackie McLean, Stanley Cowell, Howard Land, Joe Chambers, and James Spalding. Much of their music wasn't released on record till decades later, and you can hear New York musicians performing it live January 24th. Seating is intimate and limited. For tickets and details, go to marslandinggalleries.com. There's no glory in serving on a school board, at least not in North Carolina. State legislatures control your policies and purse strings. Parents sling arrows at you online and at public meetings. There are efforts to turn school board elections into overtly partisan affairs and pass legislation forcing teachers away from certain books, curricula, and even classroom conversations.
I've received threats by email and by text message. And ultimately, it's our decision as board members to make policy that is in the best interest of our students and our staff members. And there's not any comment that could be made that would interfere with our ability and our commitment to that.
I'm Matt Piken, and this is The Overlook, a podcast about the news, arts, issues, and trends of Asheville, North Carolina. Today, I talk with board members George Seibert and Amy Ray of the Asheville City Schools, and Anne Franklin and Amy Churchill of Buncombe County Schools. This is the first in a two-part conversation. Today, we talk about the responsibilities and considerations that go into this work, how control of the legislature affects and limits how school boards can respond to conditions in their own districts, and the evolving social and political climate playing out at school board meetings. In part two, we dig into North Carolina Senate Bill 49, a so-called "Parents' Bill of Rights" when it comes to public education, along with efforts to erode public education while steering money to private schools. Also, in part two, we get into the state-mandated redrawing of district lines for electoral purposes, and a movement to merge the Asheville City and Buncombe County school districts. I started this part of our conversation by asking about the general responsibilities of the school boards and the considerations that inform their work. George Seibert of Asheville City Schools is first to speak.
So, there's the general kind of policy roles of the school board that is set out by the state of North Carolina, which is be fiscal stewards of the district, hire and evaluate the superintendent, set policy for the district. Those are the kind of the big three things that school boards are tasked with. And then, the less kind of defined is be advocates for the district, be front-facing members of the public where you are in your board role, advocating for the district and advocating for the employees within it.
How many schools are in the Asheville City Schools purview, and high school, middle school?
Yeah, so there are 10 schools within our district. We have five elementary schools, two middle schools, two high schools, and then we have a program called the Career Academy.
Okay. And is that different on the county level? How all that was described, aside from the number of schools? Is that basically what happens at the county level?
Yes, the overriding rules that we follow are true for both of our systems. We have 45 schools in Buncombe County. And if you make me divide them up, I'm gonna have to get them...
No, you don't have to name all 45 schools.
That's a really good thing. We have six districts that feed together to make the 45 schools. And there are feeder schools that feed into each one of the district high schools.
Now, are there board members representing each district?
Yes.
There are?
Yes.
And it's done geographically, or how are those districts defined?
They're defined by the high school attendance area. I represent the North Buncombe District. All the schools that are in the North Buncombe District, I work for all schools, and that needs to be very clear. That is something that we work toward, is to be equitable for all districts. But when people have an issue or want to talk about something in the North Buncombe District, they would contact me. And they can contact any of them, but I could be their voice.
Got it. Now, I'm curious, from your vantage points, whether the job of a school board member has evolved much over the course of at least your personal experiences? Can any of you speak to that to any degree?
This is Amy Ray. I'm a new school board member, so I've only been on the board since last December. I can't talk about an evolution that's occurred since I've been on the board. I will say that as a parent, and I've been a parent of at least one student in Asheville City Schools for 20 years. I have two that are still, one in middle school and one in elementary school. And during that time, I think the role of the board has evolved insofar as I think the board members are more publicly accountable. And of course, that's in part because we've gone to an election system in the city of Asheville. But also, just over time, especially as we face challenges with numerous superintendents over relatively short tenures, board members have had to field more questions. But the fundamental issue, or the fundamental tasks, haven't changed. And I think the fundamental measure, which is what is best for students and what is best for our educators, those are the measures that have always applied to every school board member over time.
I was wondering about the relationship of superintendents to school boards. And it seems to me, and tell me if this is a naive way of looking at it, but school boards set the policies and superintendents implement the policies, correct? I'm just curious, if that's so, who is superintendent? Why does that matter so much? In a way, I look at it as akin to a city manager, like in the city of Asheville, where city council sets policy, city manager just implements the policy. They're not... Tell me if that is not true. Where do individual superintendents make a difference? And how do boards react or pivot based on who is superintendent?
I think they make an enormous difference. And I think your analogy to city government is, as I think would be an analogy to the presidency, and they set policy, but I, as a member of an executive agency, have to carry out that policy. I either do that well, or I don't do it well. But particularly for a superintendent, they're very public-facing. That is the person who sets the tone for the district. Is it a district that listens to teachers? Is it a district that places students in the center of all conversations? Is that superintendent someone who welcomes feedback and interaction? I think that the superintendent makes an enormous amount of difference, because after all, policy setting is one thing, but whether it's implemented in good faith and with skill is entirely up to the superintendent.
I'd also go from the reverse as well. Superintendents typically have been educators, have worked in schools for a long time. Not all school board members have. And so, superintendents are able to bring ideas to the board to consider for a new policy. And so, the superintendent is really setting the agenda more than the school board is.
Can you explain that a little more? If the policies come from the school board, and the priorities come from the school board, how does the superintendent place his or her own stamp on that?
Well, in North Carolina, it's a little interesting versus other states in that the state government has a lot of control over individual district policies. It's written into this North Carolina constitution that guarantees citizens in North Carolina free public education, which means that the General Assembly has a lot of say on a lot of school policies. So, a lot of what the school boards are given in terms of policy is coming from the state. There's not always a lot of wiggle room around certain policies that a district can enact. And so, it becomes a conversation between the district, the school board, and the superintendent about how does this policy impact what we're doing for our students?
And is it legal? I see it as a nice dance between the superintendent and the board in that our superintendent is attuned to what's going on in the state level so that our decisions are made based on the law and that we don't get outside that realm. And so, for us, and I'm sure it's for Asheville City as well, it's a choreographed dance about the policies that are implemented based on the information and the law that comes from the state, and then what the superintendent does to help us put those policies in place.
Can I ask you, and I don't know if any of you have enough time on the board to have seen the arc of how state politics play into what school boards can and can't do, how the policies are shaped. But has it always been this way? And I've heard the state called this, it's a "Mother May I" state. I've heard that term used. Has there always been that hand on setting school policies? And if so, what do you think the school boards would like to do that they can't do because of this quote "Mother May I" state?
I'll take that one.
Yeah, please.
So, this is Amy Churchill, and I've been on the board for 10 years. And as long as I've been on the board, I'll give you an example. One of the big topics that I've heard about the lack of local control is with regards to the school calendar. And basically, what that is, is that the North Carolina General Assembly sets the dates when we can start and the dates when we can end. And they...
Does that effectively change curricula? Does it change...
Absolutely.
Explain how.
I'll use, for example, our high schools. So, the way that our calendar has to set up and align now is that our high schoolers that do end-of-course exams go home for the winter holidays, two weeks usually, and then have to come back and work towards trying to do the end-of-course exam, which, I don't know if you go back to how you were in school, but I just remember Christmas time for me was that was the end of it. I didn't really have to think about school until I came back in January. Our kids are still having to try to review a lot of the stuff to try to keep their minds fresh, because they're having to take the exams later. And that's also, I think, a disadvantage nationally with like our advanced placement exams, because we have other states that have longer time to learn a particular class, but yet, the date for the exam is the same for everybody in the country.
So, the state mandates what the calendar looks like. What are some other things? Are there other examples about how the state either kind of restricts, puts bumpers on, or compels school districts to do certain things within classrooms themselves? What is taught, how things are taught, that you think things would be done differently if you had more local control?
One of the most recent rules that came down from the General Assembly is the training that we have in our K-5 classrooms. It's called a "letters Training", and it has mandated that we all teach using this content area and this methodology.
Can you explain this "letters"?
Basically, and this is a simplistic statement. It's requiring that we teach phonics, and we teach phonics through this avenue. The Letters Training is teaching all of our teachers across the state of North Carolina how to implement this program so that all students will have the benefit of that training.
That doesn't sound like necessarily a negative. That sounds like a positive.
It might not be a negative, might be a positive, but all students don't learn the same way. I come from a teaching background, and all students don't learn the same way. If I couldn't absorb the phonics way of teaching, then the teacher's hamstrung to go out and find another avenue to teach.
I know there's been a lot of controversy around reading curricula in particular.
Sure.
And I listened to this podcast. There was this proponent of teaching reading in part, or in large part, by looking at pictures in a picture book and having students more or less guess what the next word is rather than reading out the word. And it seems like phonics is actually teaching more of the actual reading than this other methodology.
And some people are good at it, and some people aren't. So, it's difficult, but that was legislated by the state.
Yeah. The science of reading is now the way that... It's a movement across the country to get away, Matt, from what you were talking about, like the sight-reading into more of the phonics. The challenge is that with this mandate from the state, our elementary educators are having to do so much professional development outside of teaching time that cuts into whatever other kind of professional development the district might want to be doing. So, if the district has a certain initiative, they're having to back off of that so that they can get in the time for the Letters Training, because the state is mandated by a certain date. All teachers need to be trained by this Letters Training. We're not saying the Letters is a bad concept. It's just when the state is putting, let's say, restrictions on a calendar where you have to be done by, what is the first week of June, I think? You can't start until the last week of August, and then you've got to fit in all of this Letters Training on top of whatever other professional development training our educators need and want. That's an example of the challenge that the state gives us that we have to maneuver around.
Let me pull on that thread a little bit. Is it that state legislators who are mandating certain ways of doing things, it's not that these areas don't work or do work, it's not that so much, but they compel a school district to only go down that route? That there's only so much time to, you mentioned staff development, that there are things perhaps a superintendent and an individual school district might want their teachers to do, but there's literally not the time to do? Is that part of this?
Yes, it is. And the pressure that's on the school system to give opportunities for that training to occur, and then the teacher having the patent power, the energy to absorb all of these skills and then to be able to implement those in the classroom.
Are the people making these decisions at the state legislature? Are they educators, or are they informed by educators? Who is making these decisions? Ultimately, it's elected officials who are voting up or down on these proposals and proposing these bills.
Correct.
But who is informing the very genesis of these bills? The very genesis of the legislation that leads to mandating school districts do X, Y, or Z? Who is writing this legislation?
I wish I knew the exact answer to that, Matt. But what I hope is that it's in conversation with Department of Public Instruction, DPI. That it's in conversation with the North Carolina Association of Educators. That it's in conversation with individual boards. I can tell you that I haven't had elected officials reach out to me and say, "Hey, this policy..." Until recently, I haven't had elected officials come to me and say, "Hey, we're considering this policy. How would this impact boards?" Whether that conversation is happening with other boards, maybe with in larger districts, I don't know. Whether it's happening in a real kind of productive dialogue between, say, DPI and the legislators writing the bills, I don't know. But that would be what I would hope is happening.
And I'd like to just say, I believe that many of these legislators have not been in classrooms in decades. And things have changed drastically. There's a lot more student collaboration. There are not rows of desks all pointing to the teacher necessarily.
From what you're seeing, is some of the legislation coming from Raleigh based on old-world thinking of how teachers and students interact or should interact, from your vantage point?
I think that does tend to cloud their judgment. I'm not saying that's their driving force, but I do believe that assumptions are never good. And I know that I try to reach out to our legislators, and as does our superintendent and board chair and many others, to please come and visit our schools and see what is going on now. Many have, some have not. But yeah, I'm not an educator. I'm in healthcare. I have learned an awful lot in the 10 years that I've been here, and I've had a lot of assumptions blown right out of my mind.
Tell me, give me some examples of that, because you're, obviously, you're a parent probably, and you have kids in school, or else why would you run for school board? But you aren't coming from an education background professionally. What has blown your mind? What has changed your perceptions that you went into the school board with? What has happened over time to change them?
So, I have one daughter. She graduated in 2019, and oh, by the way, had a fantastic education with Buncombe County Schools, went on to NC State University, graduated in May, and is currently employed. Kudos to Buncombe County Schools and mama. But however, the issue is that when I first came on this, I only had that experience of my child. My child's friends were all the same, basically, social economics, neighborhoods. And I just thought that every kid had the opportunity to study and learn and be read to, like my child did and her friends. I never really gave much thought to the very basics of some kids having to do their homework by a flashlight because they don't have electricity, or they have a really hard time learning if they are hungry. There's just so many other issues that play into how well a student can learn.
More after this. The First Look Newsletter brings you news headlines from all over Asheville every weekday morning. You can scan it at a glance and see if there's something you've missed or just need to know more about. There are no ads disguised as stories, just the headlines in a quick, easy read. Get the First Look Newsletter for free at podavl.com/newsletter. You're talking specifically about economic issues at home in some ways. And I'm wondering, do you think Raleigh in general, when it comes up with policies that affect schools, are not taking into account some of the life conditions, life situations that many of our families find themselves in that make it even difficult just for kids to come to school, let alone to thrive? Is Raleigh impeding some of that agility that school districts might need to be more responsive on the ground to families that need it?
I will say that by not fully funding the Leandro case, by not fully funding public education, that they are doing a great disservice to those students in particular. And Leandro is a case where school boards sued the North Carolina General Assembly based off of that constitutional right of every student is entitled to a free and public education. I think it went, was like in 1996 when it was started. And so, there's been, there's been plenty of blame to go around on both parties. But it just recently, within the last year, again, the ruling came down. North Carolina General Assembly, "You owe", and it was in the billions. I'm not exactly sure, I can't right off the top of my head tell you the exact amount, but I can tell you that they've paid just a small percentage of that and have not fully funded, even though it's been court mandated.
We've talked about how this state, from top down, kind of mandates certain policies and procedures. And from what I understand, you also get a lot of feedback from the public as a school board, at meetings, maybe otherwise, on social media, elsewhere. And, correct me if I'm wrong here, the public doesn't necessarily blame the state for what you can or can't do, or what's happening in the classrooms or isn't happening, but the school board is probably a very easy and obvious target. I'm curious, what has changed? It seems, from what I understand from a distance, that the tenor at school board meetings, public commenting, feedback, and demands from the public have heightened, and they've changed. Can any of you speak to that?
I will say, social media and keyboard warriors. When you don't have to identify yourself, you become much more emboldened to do things that maybe you wouldn't do in person or say in person if you were to stop somebody that was a school board member in the grocery store. I think there's just that level of decency that we just all expect when we have face-to-face conversations that gets lost behind a keyboard.
Can I ask, as school board members, are you finding yourselves personally attacked on social media?
I can absolutely speak to that, because I have been attacked on social media, to the point where there were social media pages made about me resigning by some parents that weren't happy with not having all the facts.
Does that, have the rest of you faced similar sorts of feedback, comments, threats?
I've received threats by email and by text message. But I will say that, on the whole, the vast majority of people who comment are doing so with good intention and with a good-faith interest in the bettering our schools. And we welcome all public comment. So, in terms of the tenor of the meetings, what I'll say is, even during the time that I've been on the board, it has become the case that we'll have a small group of the same folks showing up every time and offering comments that don't always feel, to me, to be particularly productive. And in fact, they seem to be mostly inflammatory and wanting us to respond in a way that perhaps interferes with what they would articulate as their First Amendment rights. And so, there seems a small group, very small group, are using the meetings as an opportunity to grandstand essentially. But I do want to say that they don't interfere with our business at all. They don't bother me particularly in terms of the job that we have to do. And I will give them this. I believe that they honestly have a point of view that they believe is in the best interest of kids. And ultimately, it's our decision as board members to make policy that is in the best interest of our students and our staff members. And there's not any comment that could be made that would interfere with our ability and our commitment to that work.
And this gets back to what I was initially curious about. People comment to you or complain to you about certain policies, what you're doing and not doing. Do you respond? It's out of our hands in some sense. Like, there are things that you're asking of us to do or not do that we can't legally do or not do. Does that come up a lot?
Sure, it depends. Yeah, go ahead, Anne.
I think as an elected official, it's our responsibility to listen to the public. And if we are the platform that they choose to express their appreciation or their frustration, we are that platform. We choose in Buncombe County not to respond to the people that do public comment. Now, we take notes, and we're very mindful of what they say, but it's there in our county, in our meeting. It's their three minutes to tell us what they feel like. Now, after the meeting's over, if those people want to hang around and talk to us, we make ourselves available to them. We are public people. We have emails and text messages. And even at the peanut butter aisle, if they want to talk to us and tell us how they feel, we are welcome to listen.
I would say that part of our job, though, is to educate the public on what we can and cannot do, that is, to say what we have authority over and what we don't. And for example, when we look at the funding and we see our three sources of funding, which are centrally federal, state, and local, and we recognize that our state funding doesn't fund our schools. It's not adequate. So, we then have to ask our county commissioners to fund us a significant amount, and every year, our request goes up. And so, when we get, for example, teachers really asking us, "We want raises. We need a living wage", all very important requests that we want to meet, we then have to explain to our educators and our families, "Here's what we have control over, and here's what we don't. And here's how you can advocate for more." So, I do believe that part of our job as board members is to educate folks and to say, you know, that we don't hold the purse strings at all. We are able to control how we use the money we get, but we are not a funding source ourselves.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Anne, what you said as well. And just to go back to what we had talked about earlier, the fact that it's a collaborative process, right? It's not just collaborative among the other board members, but it's collaborative within the district. If something is brought to us in public comment, it's then a conversation we're going to have with our folks at Central Office or whoever might be involved in that. Yes, we as board members are the public-facing side of the district, but we're not operating in a vacuum either. We are in constant conversation with folks who serve within the district so that we can address whatever might come. And then, as Amy has said, then educate back to the public and say, "This is what we can do. This is what we can't do."
And we're advocates. We're advocates for the public school system at the local level, county, and at state level.
Are you hearing things? You initially, Amy, were talking about comments online, and the anonymity that can happen there. At school board meetings, it's not anonymous. People show up and are vocal. From what I am hearing, there's maybe a certain tenor and theme to some of the comments coming across recently, at least at Asheville City Schools. I understand that a microphone has had to be turned off, or somebody has been... Please, tell me, give me some more details about this, that there have been people talking who just have a speech they want to give and eventually won't stop talking and have to be removed or have their microphone removed. What has happened, and is that just an outlier?
I would say it is an outlier.
It's an outlier.
It's an outlier. I mean, for the most part, public comment at our district, and I believe the same is true for Buncombe County, is from folks who are a deep... I believe the same is true for Buncombe County, is from folks who are a deep part of that community, whether it's a parent, sometimes students, educators, grandparents, that kind of thing. We do know, and this is true across the country, that we have folks who are going to board member or to board meetings from beyond the district that they reside in to bring up especially challenges to books or challenges to curriculum.
When did you start seeing that?
That's a good question. I've only been on the board for two and a half years, within the last year or so.
So even just within that two and a half years, you've seen it evolve just in the past year?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say so. Sure.
Does that mirror also what your experiences are at the county level?
And I think too, we started to notice a lot more public comment and public viewing when, when the pandemic. Because suddenly that was, school boards were important to everybody. And a very vocal minority took that opportunity to talk about the mask or in-person learning versus not learning from home.
Not being in person.
And took that maybe a step further to then become social warriors, maybe, for other views and beliefs that they had that they then brought to the school systems.
I just wanted to say that one of the things that has happened to us is that we have decided to broadcast our meeting, which gives a broader number of people the opportunity to listen. And the city's been doing that longer than we have. And by virtue of that, we hope that people are paying attention and they understand what we're doing. But it's on that level, whereas goodness, when I first came on the board, we didn't do that.
I'm curious about that. George, you talked about people who don't live in the school district who are appearing and speaking. And you said you've noticed that also at the county level. What are these factions attached to? Are there specific movements from outside that are happening nationally that you can point to? Or is it more vague and cloudy than that? And so how do you know they are from outside?
It's pretty specific, don't you think?
You mentioned reading materials.
We, yeah, we don't ask folks giving public comment to identify with a group unless they say they're speaking on behalf of a group. And that's, people giving public comment, they self-regulate that. So most individuals are just coming up as individuals. Now, whether they're being fed something from organizations
Or the internet.
Right? Or the internet? I don't know. I'll be honest, I don't.
I guess I was just wondering how you know?
We require people to sign in and tell us their address, which after it's over, we can look and see if they have students that are in our jurisdiction or if they live in Raleigh.
So if this is happening, if there are people from outside the district who are starting to be a greater presence at school boards, still might be a minority of people, but if they are, if they're starting to be a greater presence, how is that affecting? Or is it affecting the work you do? And if it isn't affecting it, Amy, you talked about people can speak to whatever they want to speak. It doesn't affect how we do our job. Then why are they there?
I think they want to affect what we do. And I think frankly, they want to scare us sometimes. But I will say this, the way that they, they don't affect the way that this board, and I'm sure Buncombe County Board does its work. What I think it can affect, and this goes beyond school boards, right? It goes to local officials that are serving all around this country. That as local officials become more and more the target of groups who want to disrupt and who want to make public service more difficult, then people will hesitate to serve. I've been asked many times, why would you do this? I've been asked that in different states when people find out. So it's not a problem unique to Buncombe County or a challenge. I wouldn't say it's a problem. I would say it's a challenge. It's a challenge for local election officials. It's a challenge for local school boards. It's a challenge for all local leaders right now.
Do you think that this is part of a broader movement to either sow distrust in public schools in general, to create a certain undercurrent of chaos that would turn parents off to public schools and further support the privatization of education?
I personally think that there is a strong feeling in North Carolina and probably even nationally to dismantle public school, to take, take it away from the people. And in North Carolina, the constitution guarantees of a free public education. By chipping away from what we have, I believe they want to do away with public school.
Remember, this is just part one of my conversation with George Seibert and Amy Ray of Asheville City Schools and Ann Franklin and Amy Churchill of Buncombe County Schools. The second half comes out October 4th. Our First Look Newsletter gives you just a handful of daily headlines from around the local media landscape to get you on your morning. We also have a weekly newsletter devoted to all things The Overlook that hits you every Friday. Both are free and available at podavl.com/newsletter. And please support the show by going to our Patreon page at patreon.com/theoverlookpodcast. As with most of my interviews, today's conversation happened inside the BB Theater, whose owners, Susan and Giles Collard, have been so gracious enough to allow me to use as my second broadcast studio. Our theme music for The Overlook, Maker's Song, comes courtesy of the Asheville band, The Resonant Rogues. The Overlook is a production of Podcast Asheville. New episodes of The Overlook come out every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. I'm Matt Piken and I'll see you on the next episode of The Overlook.
Curious how the word y'all has conquered the English-speaking world? Ever wonder why there are so many dollar stores and what they mean to the American landscape? I'm Anissa Khalifa, host of the new podcast, The Broadside, from North Carolina Public Radio. We explore stories at the heart of the American South. Each week, we go beyond the headlines and cover a single topic that impacts our region and explain how it reverberates across the country. Follow The Broadside wherever you get your podcasts.